Session here in New Corral for some council for July twentieth, two thousand twenty at five thirty P M. Uh, good, good afternoon, everyone. Uh, Ms. Burner, if you could call roll, please, when you are ready.
Mayor Lowry.
Here.
Councilwoman Hopkins.
Here.
Councilman Grimm.
I am here.
Councilwoman Nowakowski.
Here.
Councilman Cobb.
Yep.
Councilwoman Eggleston.
Yep.
And Vice America.
I'm here.
Seven members present.
Thank you very much. And tonight's invitation will be by Councilman Ron Cobb.
I had my father help us to do what's right for the citizens and the community. Watch over our military, men and women in military and 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 watch over our firefighter E M Ts. Law enforcement and also help us get to this pandemic. In Jesus' name, we pray amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. And the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Mr. Grimm. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance.
To the flag. For the United States.
United States of America.
And to the Republic.
Republic. For which it stands.
One nation.
Nation.
Under God.
God.
Invisible. Liberty. Justice. Thank you, Mr. Grimm, as always.
Sorry.
All right, so let's see, two minutes, communications none, uh, city manager's report none. Uh, comments from the members of the public. Do you have anything, Mr. Bridge, on the email?
Uh, yes, we do. It's about the, uh, speed limit on Jefferson, which, uh, well, I have a section to talk about that in the regular session, so you might be just wait till then.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a problem with it. Um, i- does it have a specific question, I'm assuming?
He just basically wants an update on the, uh, process.
Okay, okay, yeah, and I'd seen that that was in the city manager's report, so yeah, I mean, if everyone else is okay with that, just wait till the regular session.
Yeah, that's fine.
Alrighty, um, media reports none, resolutions, ordinance zip, other business, Mr. Bridge, I'll hand it over to you, good, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, members of public, uh, for, uh, participating and watching live tonight. So under other businesses, legislation discussion, so before we talk about the legislation that's voted up tonight, I did want to, uh, have a just short discussion, or as long as council wants to take, um, part of the area city manager email group. And, uh, Montgomery County passed a, uh, resolution declaring racism as a public health emergency, and they did ask all the city managers to, um, uh, give that to their council for discussion topics. So since we have to do everything in open session, I figured the work session would be the most appropriate point for that. So I did, I did attach that with this works, uh, session pass packet, so basically, just to sum up the resolution, they are declaring that racism, racism as a public health. And that it creates certain barriers, and they go into further outline their program goals and objectives. So, um, I was just doing the due diligence, I was asked of all the area city managers to put it in front of council. It's something that you guys can discuss tonight, or maybe take it and we can pick it up next week if you guys wanted some time to really look at it, or get any more information on it. But I'll, I'll turn it over to the council for on that matter.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bridge. Uh, council, have any discussion on this topic or, uh, anything related?
This has to be the dumbest thing I've seen in quite some time.
Okay.
Racism, a health issue. They know what racism is. Racism is belief that race is the primary determinant of human traits, capabilities, and that racial differences produce some inherent superiority of a particular race. Find that it's not that rampant, especially in our country. And if they, you make it a health issue, does that mean they can collect on their health insurance on it?
Right. Anything else, Mr. Grimm?
Oh, that's it.
All right, anything else, council, on this topic?
I just wanted.
Oh, go ahead, Ms. Hopkins.
I just wanted to add one thing. I'd like to see it before I'd even come in. We have, you have a copy, don't you, Randy? Um.
It, it was, it was attached to the work session packet.
Yeah, it was attached to the, to the packets that were sent out.
Oh, okay, thanks.
Okay. And any, any other comments, council? All right, back to you, Mr. Bridge.
All right, thank you. Let me just note this here that we talked about. And moving on, so the legislation up for tonight for council, uh, the, uh, we have a resolution twenty twenty dash ten R. And that is a yearly housekeeping that is for the city manager to attend sunshining, uh, training on behalf of city council. Um, so we haven't, I have not done that yet for twenty twenty. Uh, last year I took Councilman Eggleston, uh, with me. Sorry, uh, yeah, Councilman Eggleston, uh, Councilwoman Eggleston, it was a great event, so it doesn't mean that council, uh, council members cannot partake in the training. Uh, but if by chance you register and something comes up and you have to cancel your reg- registration, the fact that I won't do it, um, would actually cover everyone. So you're more than welcome to still do it on your own, um, but I can go ahead and do it on behalf of everyone, uh, but I do encourage everyone to do it themselves.
Ms. Nowakowski, go ahead.
Um, I would like to attend.
Okay, they're all, they're all virtual right now, so you have to do it because of what's going on. Normally, we actually go to a facility and they actually have in-person training. They have about four or five of those a year. Uh, but all year, you can actually go online and self-train yourself. And given what's going on in today's age, that's what we'll have to do, so like I said, you're more than welcome to don't go and complete it yourself. I'm gonna go ahead and complete it, and this just covers it all, just in case something happens that one of the council members could not get to it.
Right.
And can I move on to the next one, sir? Is that good?
Yeah, doesn't sound like we have anything else, as, as, uh.
Okay, and we have ordinance on tonight, twenty 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 dash twenty-two E. And that is, uh, an agreement with the Board of Clark County Commissioners for the, uh, twenty twenty roadway resurfacing contract. So that is something that we also do every year, um, so that is up. It is emergency ordinance tonight, uh, because they do need to get the paperwork back, so the project can't part. So we do, uh, six affirmative votes for that one tonight. And we're also gonna need six affirmative votes for ordinance twenty twenty dash twenty-three E. Uh, that one, if council recalls, a few months ago, I had brought some, uh, selections up to council regarding the extension of the cell tower lease that we have. We have a few options. Council decided to go ahead and extend the lease, and they would give us a twenty thousand dollar bonus on that. So that's what this legislation is. It's to go ahead and extend that cell tower lease, and then the city get a twenty thousand dollar, uh, bonus for doing that. So then again, that is emergency order, uh, emergency ordinance tonight as well, due to the, uh, paperwork needing to be backed in time. So that is all for the legislation tonight. Any questions, uh, pertaining to those?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Grimm.
Uh, Mr. Bridge, do, have we determined, uh, what streets would be done, or will that be done at a later date?
Um, how he does, how he's already mentioned that, I do believe. It might be.
Yeah.
A report, um, let me take a look at that, please, sir.
Well, if it's any report, I can hang it.
Yep, it's twenty, he does have it, it's resurface Langdale, Glen, Hamilton, Clayton Cor- Corona cir- uh, circle. And Ship Seal Fog, Hillcrest Avenue, Tow Shore, Short Drive. So quite a bit of, of, of road repair with just that one, one agreement.
I was riding my bike up on Edge Brook and, uh, Glen, that area, and it needs it.
Yeah.
You notice it more on a bicycle than you do in a car.
Oh, I bet, I bet. Same thing I like on roller, roller blade, you notice the minute cracks.
Yeah.
Back off of the legislation.
All right. Need one second here. My, uh, there we go. Okay, so, in, uh, council, any other discussion on legislation before we move on to the, uh, uh, water and utility bill section?
I have a question.
Mr. Cobb.
Uh, Mr. Bridge. Didn't we back here on a few months ago approve that deal on the tower back there?
No, you approved the, what option you guys wanted to do. This is a result of that option choosing, and we had to redo the contract. The only thing council voted on before, that was a few months ago, is what option you guys wanted to do, whether that be extend the lease, get a, get a buyout and terminate the lease. So that's what you guys decided on a few months ago, and, and to legislation tonight, to reiterate, is because council chose to keep the current lease, just extending the term on it, and then get a twenty thousand dollar signing bonus for doing so.
Anything else, Mr. Cobb?
No, no, I was thinking the other way that we had already approved it. I apologize.
No worries, no worries at all. It was, it was quite some time ago. I think it was close to like maybe ten and a half months. And it took her, the attorneys a little while to get it done, because this particular carrier usually, I mean, not carry, but company, they, they don't do a lot of work with public entities. They usually do a lot with private entities. So their, their contracts had to be amended quite some, quite a bit to actually jive with our codes and then state code for public organizations opposed to private.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cobb. Anyone else before we move on to utilities? All right, and back to you, Mr. Bridge, I would assume, unless Ms. Marshall's taking over?
No, no, I'll, I'll, I'll leave it here. I did, I, everyone, clearly, we have Kathy Marshall here. She is our utility clerk. In the city for quite some time. She's a highly valued employee, and she's very knowledgeable about the subject matter, which we're going to be discussing tonight. So as we discussed briefly at the last meeting, is that, um, the state of Ohio now is allowing the water bills to be not only penalized again, but also disconnected for non-payment. So that started July fourteenth. Uh, some area municipalities already started, uh, the process, and some are just now discussing it. So we clearly can't and did not want to make that administrative decision without consulting council first. So, uh, in the work session agenda packet, uh, that I sent out, passed the resolution there. Uh, I've been, now this is the order dated June twelfth from the state of Ohio. That allows the service to come back on. It has the Ohio envelope there in the top, uh, left corner. Uh, but also too, I've been also sending council monthly updates on the, uh, utility tracking for the temple cent, ten percent penalty, and also the, uh, reconnect fee. So, uh, yeah, as I determined on late Friday, and then talking with, uh, Kathy this day, today. There's actually a calculation error on this Excel sheet that I have been sending you guys for the past few months. We just now noticed it, actually, not too long ago. So the fifty dollar reconnect fee, um, we have a total of not, of forty-nine accounts, so how I was calculating that was a running total. And that's not the way to do that, so, um, digging deeper in through the data that Kathy sent me. The total amount that the city has not collected due to reconnect fees has been two thousand four hundred and fifty, opposed to the eight thousand five hundred and fifty that was actually reported to council. Um, the temple cent penalty was not impacted by that, so when we take the eight thousand two hundred nineteen dollars and add to two thousand four hundred and fifty. Uh, the utility bills, uh, are off ten thousand six hundred and sixty-nine dollars and seventy-three cents. So I just wanted to clear that up, um, but as we can see from the data that was presented, that we do have some, we, we, we do have to have the honest discussion about how council wants to move forward. Because the, uh, water and wastewater are losing revenues due to that, as, as we can see. I also sent out a water revenue and a wastewater, water revenue, uh, comparison from this time till last year. Um, so in the water department, it's actually up about twenty-six thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars compared to this time last year. However, the flip side to that, the wastewater revenue is down about eighteen thousand three hundred. Um, we recently have increased the water rates, and then we haven't done the wastewater rates yet, but unfortunately, we will be bringing some information to council regarding those potential rate increases here soon. So, um, to be in line with other jurisdictions and municipalities and to best serve the two funds that, um. That, that need, and need to go back to normal operations. Uh, we are, we are suggesting that council go ahead and reinstate the ten percent penalty, and also go ahead and reinstate the disconnect fee. And to allow the city to move forward with getting back to normal, uh, successfully in our billing procedures. Um, I invited Kathy here today because we do have a few accounts that are quite past due, and we're gonna have to talk about the payment arrangements. And also, and Kathy, as we're doing a very good job of reaching out to these customers by phone, by email, by, you know, mailings and stuff like that, as, as described in the customer service outreach, uh, information on the last sheet. So what is, what's council's opinions with the revenue that we've lost, and how council wants to move forward with the utility connections and penalty vote?
Mr. Cobb. Mr. Bridge. I understand what you're saying, but take consideration. The report as of today, we are, uh, in the numbers where it's coming back on this virus. We're showing right now the numbers Florida had a month ago. We're at seventy-one thousand. Uh, I know what you're trying to say here and what you want to do, and I, I, I'm on both sides of the boat.
The tough call.
Yeah, you know, and, but, I, I, we need to be careful trading water here. Uh, can I ask Ms. Marshall a question?
Absolutely, that's why she's here.
Ms. Marshall.
Yes.
Not me.
Go ahead, Mr. Cobb.
Okay, how many people have you been able to contact and said they would do anything towards the bill, or they would not?
I had talked to, um, the ones that I called were the ones that have been really behind. Um, it's like February, we have one person march to April sixth, May twenty-three, and June seventeen. When I contacted them, there was only three that I really couldn't get a hold of. One, because, um, the landlord couldn't even get a hold of them. Another one, uh, the neighbors have complained, the, the people that are living in the house, it is, uh, owned by a deceased woman. And they just moved in, so they've been living there, so there's no phone number, no contact with them. They don't really even know who they are. I've tried door tags and stuff like that. Everyone else that I talked to were aware that they owed the bill. No one had told me they were laid off. Um, I'm sure they had issues why they weren't paying. Um, and I had just told them each time I spoke to them. I called, I've been calling monthly. And, uh, they just said they were going to, you know, they would tell me they'd have it in, or they were going to have it in. And I told them that sooner or later, this, you know, this could be coming. And they all said, you know, they were hoping to get it all taken care of before shut off time. Um, one thing I wanted to throw in, this last time I mailed out two thousand three hundred and eleven bills. That's our current, uh, ra- or number of people. Um, when I did, when I had to send delinquents this time, I sent out four hundred and twenty-two. Normally, I send out over six hundred. Um, when, by the time we get to the shut off day, we normally have anywhere from twenty to thirty-five people. So right now, we're at forty-nine. Um, you know, that says a lot for the community, for them trying to pay and keeping it active. Some of the people I spoke to, you know, said that they knew that the city needed the money, and as with other utilities, and they were really trying to, um, pay those bills. And I think some, of course, are able to, and some aren't. Um, I did tell the people that owed from behind, you know, that we would be offering the payment arrangements. In the packet, it shows how we do the payment arrangements now. Uh, did you all get to have a chance to look at that?
Yeah.
Okay. So, uh, we, you know, we have extended, uh, before. Um, working on the other side of it, being in the water and sewer, doing the billing, you know, I see where our revenue is down. We did get a good increase with water, because New Corral Sports Center just emptied and filled their pool up, and that took a lot of water for that. Um. But seeing that, you know, I think it's important that we try to get most of the money in before the end of the year. Um, so it, you know, balances out, but again, that's up to you, what you want to do. So if you get a payment arrangement with somebody that owed, uh, quite a bit, they would have five payments to be able to pay. A lot of the bills aren't very much the past due. Um, there are two that are, are pretty high, but the rest are just, like I said, a month or two behind, and their bills monthly are not high. Um, so, you know, I'll, I'll do whatever you want me to do, of course, and, uh. Is there any other questions on that?
I want to get back to Mr. Bridge on a question. Mr. Bridge. Question for you.
Okay.
I will support this only if we come to another shutdown again. We stay at home and everything, can, that we reinduce this back in.
That, 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 that's something we have to talk to your, their council members about, Mr. Cobb. I, I think, I think that's a very fair plan, to be honest with you, and I think it's a good way to think outside the box. Because, you know, if it does come to that, we're all, we're, we'll come back to the drawing board anyway with council. But all those type of decisions would have to be approved or denied by council. So I think that's a very good idea, if you guys were to put it back on, just to kind of put a bandaid on the hemorrhage. And then if we do got back in the shutdowns, we're gonna have to come back to council anyway, because I'm gonna re-update up operating procedures like I did last time. So it's gonna be a very involved process, and that's one thing I, I, that's one thing we've done very well together during this COVID thing, is, you know, communicate at work sessions and regular sessions very openly and honestly about how the city's operated. So, uh, if it comes back to that, Mr. Cobb, to re- to reiterate, we'll be coming back to council anyway.
That's all I have.
Ms. Mayor.
Um, Ms. Eggleston, then we'll go to Mr. Grimm.
Um, I think I agree with Mr. Cobb. I, and I, you know, we need the money. But if we were to go to another shutdown, I want to be able to have the option of being able to save them again.
Right. Okay. Fair enough. Anything else?
No.
All right, thank you, Mr. Grimm.
Well, first of all, I want to publicly thank the community for working with us through this ordeal. I think they realize it's not our water system, it's your water system and your sewer system. But I have some questions for Kathy. Um, I get my water bill around the middle of the month. Do I, they all go out at once?
I try to mail the bills out around the twenty-third of each month, so you receive it, you know, before, hopefully before the beginning of next month. And the way ordinance is, your bill is due upon receipt. You have until that due date, which is normally the fifteenth, to pay without penalty. And then after the fifteenth, then the penalty goes on, and that's when the delinquent notice is sent out, and you have till the end of the month to pay that.
Well, I would, uh, offer this suggestion, uh, say, on, on a specific day, say August first. We take the current amount plus the past due amount, consider that the current amount, and then go along normal procedure. If they haven't paid in fifteen days, if they haven't paid in a certain amount of days, they get, uh, the warning letters, they get disconnected, and they get charged that reconnection fee. But I would also like to see a provision to give Kathy, uh, a little leeway if somebody has some extenuating circumstances. Um, I'm sure there are some people that are still out of work. I know water bills are not that much for residents, minds running, running usually fifteen something a month, or thirty something a month. But I don't want to put anybody out of water because they are out of work and have no ability to pay it.
Well, like the way it normally stands now, if they were to make their payment arrangements by July thirty-first, which would be a normal payment arrangement deadline. Uh, we normally shut off then, uh, sometime in the second week of the month. Is that something that you're for there then?
Just once, once.
That's just, that's just for the past due. You know, they get shut off for the past due. They still can pay. Let's say they got shut off for their past due, they would pay that, they would still have their current bill for that month. They have the rest of the month to pay.
One day, say August first, um, if their past due amount is a hundred dollars, their current bill is thirty bucks, then their August bill will be a hundred and thirty dollars. And we would operate on that as the, um. Basis for, uh, for late notes and for disconnection. And just follow regular procedure, considering that the current bill. Give them, say, six months to, uh, get caught up.
Yeah, some people may, um, like I said, I have, I've only heard from one person, um, out of the forty-nine that I had this time. That, uh, has even just kind of asked a question about the, uh, payment arrangement. I have not had anybody request one yet.
So if I'm, so if I'm not saying that correctly, um, so how that, like, August one, you had, so for your example, Mr. Grimm, you had a hundred past due, and then thirty due. On August one, your now current bill is one thirty. So they don't pay that by the fifteenth, and that gets penalized, and they can go on payment range for that past due amount.
Right.
Is that right?
Right.
Okay, Kathy, does that make sense for our billing procedures? That would, it could work like that?
So then, oh, I guess my question is, when do you want the shut offs to start?
Whenever they say.
August sixteenth would be the day after the bills do, right? No?
Well, that's just when the penalty goes on for the, that would be when the first time we would have penalty go on for the current bill.
So that would be new shut off, they would be September first, then, if it's fifteen days past, right?
Well, we know they, the, it depends on when the water department can actually do the shut off. We had a scheduled day already in August for a shut off. We normally set those yearly, you know, um, but they vary because of. You know, if they have to do a dig up, if there's an emergency situation that they can't do it that day.
So council, council can just say on September one, that's when it can start, although it may not happen on September one. After September one, the city has fair game to go. It could be, you know, September fourth, but at least it's after that. I think what, I think, and I like the idea because it allows people to prepare, and it's not so sudden. It's still almost a month and a half away, and it's still, it, it's, it allows us to collect our money, and also allows the user to be on a payment plan should they should, should they need to use it. So I kind of like, I like all the ideas coming from council members tonight, actually, on the matter, so, so that definitely something to think about.
Um, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Grimm. Ms. Hopkins.
Um, for the two people you said that have a pretty high bill, have they made any arrangements at all?
No, one of them actually said that they were told that council was gonna wipe their, uh, bill off. And the other one, uh, I have not heard from them.
So on those, I'm sorry, Ms. Hopkins, are you finished?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Marshall, so on those two larger bills, um, what's the max amount of, um, of payments that they will be allowed to make on, on those bills?
Well, I normally, um, you know, I normally, they normally tell me what they can afford. You know, when it's something that long, and then, cause, uh, the way our payment arrangements are. Let's say they pay fifty towards the payment arrangement, they also have to pay their current bill.
Right.
Um. And most of the time, you know, they can pay the current bill, they can pay it anytime during the month, you know? Um. So normally, I work with them, I've had them, I've had, I have a current one now that had an extremely high bill. And, uh, for a toilet, and it's a business, and they're, they're making a hundred dollar payment a month plus their regular bill. Um, and, and they were, you know, their regular bill is quite small. You know, I've had where, we've had somebody that had another large leak, and they paid, um, you know, fifty dollars a month. They paid, I've never, they've never really asked to pay anything less or anything, because they try to get them paid off. You know, as soon as they possibly can, because it interferes with them paying their other bills.
Right.
But I, you know, I try to work with them and see what they can, you know, what they want to do. I give them the option of talking first, and then a lot of times I'll come back with even a smaller amount that they need to pay.
Okay.
You know?
Yeah, I, I mean, I mean, me personally, I have no pro, I don't have a problem with moving back into, uh, the, the, you know, the disconnect fees and, and things of that nature. With, with the exception of like Mr. Cobb and, uh, Ms. Hopkins and a couple others had said that, you know, if, if, uh. If the COVID outbreak was to get worse, and we could come back and, you know, reassess how, how to.
If the COVID outbreak was to get worse and we could come back and, you know, reassess how, how to move forward with that. You know, how it may or may not affect, you know, the, the people who in their jobs within the city of New Coralisle, so.
And who knows what the governor will say, you know?
Right. Exactly. So.
If we can do a second shutdown, they might just do what they did before and mandate it so that we not shutting one off.
Right, depending on how severe it is. So.
Are, are we talking then of putting the penalty on starting in August then?
Yes, I believe, I believe so. That's the way I'm taking it. Mr. Cobb, did you have something?
Yes, you, Ms. Marshall, did you say there was two people that think we're going to write it off?
There was one.
One?
The two larger bills, one person I have not had a conversation with here lately. I had spoke to that person prior and they knew that they owed and had a bill up. The one, the other large bill, they told me that they were told that council was going to wipe off their bill.
Can I suggest something here, counsel, Mr. Mayor? The, the one that thinks it's going to be wrote off, that a certified letter be sent to them. Once it's reinstated, if they have not contacted Ms. Marshall at City Hall to make arrangement, they will be shut off.
I don't think we need to make exceptions for one individual.
If you got one that says they're not going to pay, if they think it's going to be right off. And it's a high dollar bill, yes.
If they don't pay, they get shut off.
Right.
Well, they, and they, you know, they got. The regular bill with the green flyer that was in it. I had checked most of the, you know, everybody I was able to talk to had received that.
Right. Well, and then obviously if they also don't pay their bill, we shut them off and it stays off. I mean. I would assume that they would be looking at having to move out of the house for health reasons for the health department.
Yeah, it's kind of hard to get the health department to follow through on that. I've had a couple houses in the past that they hadn't paid the bill and. I call, after three days, we're supposed to notify the health.
Okay.
And I do, and it's very hard for them to, they'll come out after a couple weeks and placard the house. And tell people they have to leave, but the people just take the placard down. And they end up staying there until, you know, something else happens. They move out or, or they get the, the bank comes or, you know.
Right. Okay. Ms. Noakowski or Mr. Vice Mayor, do you have anything to add?
Nothing.
Okay. Mr. Bridge, I guess I'll hand it back to you, sir. All right, Kathy, are you squared away with how council wants to proceed with that?
Yeah, I'm just gonna, we'll start penalties in August.
Right.
We'll give them, we won't start shut offs until September.
Okay. Sounds good.
All right, that sounds fine. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And again, I just want to say, I think the, the people at New Coralisle, you know, they care about our city and. I think they're trying.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, Ms. Marshall.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Kathy.
Okay, see you later.
Thank you. Council, that is all I have for other business. So that's all I, I have for tonight's work session. All right, council, have anything else I'd like to go over this evening before we end the work session? Uh, Mr., I believe I heard Mr. Vice Mayor, sir.
Based upon the fact that it looks like our revenues are substantially reduced. And I sent that. Piece of literature around to all of council. The way that some of the other municipalities were approaching. This shortfall due to this virus. Do you feel that we as a council need to step back? Possibly look at our budget. And see what we need to do to. I guess the word is possibly solidify the budget for the rest of the year. In order to make sure that our heads are above water.
Mr. Bridge. It's good timing on that. So I'm part of the city manager report. I put other, upcoming is called a mid-year budget. Let me flip to that real quick. So it's, yeah, it's, it's titled twenty twenty, a budget adjustments due to COVID nineteen revenue expenses NCIP. So one of the very, very first tasks we're going to do when we set our new finance director is we're going to go through and. Present some changes to council due to the COVID revenue and expenses. So that will be coming to you guys ASAP. As soon as you get someone in there to kind of look at that and look at our systems, but we do need to go ahead and take a look at our revenues. And definitely look at some of our expenses to kind of what we can slash. And then we'll actually have to more than likely reapprove a whole new appropriation budget because of all the separate changes. You know, have to recertify that with the county auditor. So that is one, again, to read. We will be tackling once our finance director is actually. With. With what Mr. Cobb's, or I mean, I'm sorry, Mr. Cook is asking, Mr. Bridge, what kind of timeframe do you think? Because I know we've got to get the new planet or the finance director in play and get them seated and get everything caught up. What kind of timeline are you thinking that we would see? You know, maybe a meeting or a work session to go over that. I mean, how far out are you thinking? Probably thirty days, but also it's going to allow us more times to see how our, our receiving is coming in from CCA. Because the numbers that we're getting from our tax collections are not too inaccurate. So until we have a better understanding of what those income tax collections look like. We're just reaching for straws if we go and slash the budget based off our revenues we're getting in. CCA is still sending us money from May and April, so. Given the nature of what's going on with everyone being short-staffed, we're still getting payments well after the month is closed. So. Talking with Vicky is they are getting to go back into full steam now the tax season's over. They're going to dedicate five days a week to getting those receipts to people. But it's not only us, it's anyone who's really dealing with income tax receipt. If you look at all the area newspapers when it comes to municipalities. Everyone hasn't really done anything yet because it's still just a little too early. So I say within the next thirty days, we'll have a much clearer picture of what's going on. So I would have to say probably thirty days to answer your question. Thank you, sir. Mr. Vice Mayor, what do you think of that? Is that, I mean, are you okay with working with that timetable?
Yeah, basically, we're. Probably somewhere around about the mid-August. Setting this up and, and looking at that point. But if some of the other cities are looking at layoffs. You know, again. We don't know where this virus is going. We don't know what's going to be coming down the tube. As far as the virus, if it's going to get worse. And our revenues are going to shrink even further. Then I think we're going to be in, in deep trouble.
Did you, uh, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Mr. Bridge, just to retouch on something you'd said. So you said the. CCA is running just behind just normal reasons or. As far as them not giving us actual up-to-date numbers? They, they've been short-staffed since the COVID started. So I mean, if you look at the Excel sheets I send you guys, they all have the little things at the bottom as that we're still receiving estimated payments. Right. So we could next month get a payment that should have been allocated to us in May. They just didn't process it in time. Okay, so it's just, it's just that they're basically overloaded with work with a short amount of staff. Well, that too, but and then tax filing was extended to July. So now that stat passed, what they're doing with around tax season or they're doing two days a week and just dedicating that to tax help. You know, so that's over, now they're back to five days of processing. Okay, I just want to make sure I understood that. Thank you. Sure, no problem. Mr. Hutchinson, did you have something? I thought I saw you put your hand up.
Nope.
Okay, just want, just want to make sure. Anything else, council or?
I've got some questions.
Okay, you were, you were good, Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Cobb, to you, sir.
Mr. Bridge.
Yes, sir.
Back when we had the march in town, the Black, Black Lives Matter. What was the expense for all law enforcement?
Uh, zero dollars. They didn't charge us anything.
They didn't charge us nothing?
Nope.
And. Now I forgot what I was going to ask you. Oh, how we're doing on the. Trash contract.
Trash contract will be out to you guys as soon as I update the table of contents.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Anyone else? All right, anything else, Mr. Bridge? Nope, I'm good, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. All right, well, I guess we will, if no one has anything else, we'll wrap this meeting up.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
First by Mr. Grimm, second by Ms. Sagleston.
Right. Vice Mayor Cook.
Yes.
Mayor Lowry.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hopkins.
Yes.
Councilman Grimm.
Yes.
Councilwoman Nowakowski.
You're muted.
I know you're muted.
There you go. There's your.
Councilman Cobb.
Yeah.
And Councilwoman Sagleston.
Yes.
I have to mute. I live on Main Street.
So do I.
All right. We'll be, we will be back at seven PM for our regular scheduled council meeting. We see you all then. Thank you.
Later, y'all.